Good evening to you all and welcome to our February 6 regular meeting of the Garner Town Council. Welcome you all here tonight and we have a number of items to take care of, so we'll get ready to jump right into our meeting. I'll begin by asking our town clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Okay, thank you and thank you councilmembers. Just a quick note, those of you who attend meetings regularly, maybe some of you, you'll notice that we're finally back to our original configuration on the day as of year. We had to change things around for a while as a result of COVID, so if the mayor seems slightly confused tonight, it may be because I'm a little hedged in here a little more than unusual. But at any rate, I think the setup's gonna work just fine for us and we're glad everybody's in place. Okay, with that said, I want to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Elmo Vance, who will lead us in a pledge of allegiance and he will also introduce, excuse me, introduce our person to give our invocation. Please stand if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated.
Mr. Mayor and council, I have the privilege to introduce for the invocation Reverend Colton McDaniel, who is over able to serve. Reverend McDaniel, would please step forward? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and distinguished council for allowing me this privilege to say the prayer for tonight. May we pray? God, we ask your blessing on the decisions that will be made tonight at this meeting. Be present in our minds so that first and foremost, our thoughts would be your thoughts. Be present as we speak, so that our words convey your message of compassion and hope for people of all abilities in our community. Be present in our decisions, bold and courageous for those that honor you and prayerfully waiting when there is some doubt. Be present, oh God, so that all that is said and done tonight honors your kingdom. Amen.
Amen.
Reverend McDaniel, I'd like to give you an opportunity to tell us something, some things that Able to Serve is doing within the community.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm Able to Serve is celebrating our 20th year of supporting adults with disabilities in this community. I'm very proud of it. I've been seeing it from the very beginning. We use curriculum that the school uses for continuing education. We have washing machine and dryer, so we teach life skills. But one of the most important parts is that we want them to develop into what God wants them to be, and then we want them to have compassion for others and serve this community. Garner's a great place, not because just a few people stood together and made it that way, it's because people of all abilities stood together and made it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. McDaniel, let me just again say a word of thanks and certainly recognize your program. I've watched it grow with the years and I give you a lot of credit for your good leadership there. I know you have a lot of people that help you there, but it's been inspirational really to see how that has developed. I knew you moved from one place to the other and you're still growing, 20 years now, right?
Yes, sir. So staff and 60 adults with disabilities.
Okay, quite a, quite a, quite an amazing program. Thank you for all you do for those people in our community. Okay, thank you. Okay, we begin our meetings with a segment called petitions and comments, and we usually ask people to sign up in advance if they want to address the council on an item that's on their mind. I believe the town clerk said there was no one who signed up in advance, is that correct?
Correct.
But notwithstanding that, if you came for the express purpose of wanting to make a petition or comment to the council, I will recognize you at this time. Is there anyone? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We do have a couple of presentations and I want to take just a personal point of privilege. There's a gentleman who is sitting at the back of the room that I want to just recognize because he's having a birthday today and I don't get a chance to do that very often, but Rick Mercer's a guy who keeps things together in these meetings in so many ways, and he's been a real assistant to the, to the mayor in helping me keep myself where I need to be sometimes and saying the things I need to say. He's a scriptwriter amongst other things. So Rick, I don't know how old you are, but how old you are, you look great and happy birthday, sir. Okay, you can stick around if you want to or whatever. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to actually recognize some new employees tonight, and so I'm going to recognize the town manager. Let's see, where's the town manager? Oh, he's down there, okay.
Down here now.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure who's doing, is Ashley or who's, who's doing the introductions? Someone from planning?
Yeah, that's right.
Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Burnett, if you'd like to stand. So, thank you, Count, Mr. Mayor, council. I just want to introduce our newest member of the planning department. This is Ms. Burnett Brown. She did, has served with the town previously in the Parks and Rec Department. She comes to us, comes to us with a lot of state agency experience, including the North Carolina Board of Nursing and the Department of Public Safety, and to say that we are excited to have her here and to complete, almost complete our team. We are super excited to have her here. We were all anxiously awaiting for her to start and it's been a week, so she's back for week two, and she has just fit right in up at the front. And so she is our forward-facing representative of the planning department, and we're thrilled to have her. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And if she cares to make a comment or two, we'll hear from her. If she doesn't, that'll be okay.
Thank you. It's just a pleasure to be here and serve the citizens of the town of Garner, and I am grateful to be on board.
Okay, thank you. We welcome you and you're joining a great team, and we know you'll do a lot of good work for us, so we thank you very much. Was that it for presentations?
That's it for today.
Okay, all right.
We'll have some others in the future.
Okay, we'll look forward to that, to meeting those people as well. Okay, council, it is time now for us to adopt the agenda. You have it before you there, and I'm not aware of any changes, so unless anybody is, entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda.
A move?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. Phil. Okay, if you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, at this time, I want to recognize Councilmember Kathy Behringer, who will share with us a proclamation indicating and recognizing Black History Month. So Ms. Behringer, if you would share that at this time?
Whereas February has been designated as Black History Month, in which we pause to reflect on the vast contributions of African Americans, and whereas this month gives us an opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders, scholars, entrepreneurs, workers, and citizens who have contributed to the progress of our nation, and whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty, whereas we join with all Americans in celebrating our diverse heritage and culture and continuing our efforts to protect democracy for all people and recognize the vital achievements of all African Americans as well as our local African American residents. Now therefore, Ken Marshburn, Mayor, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 Black History Month.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Behringer, and I would just say to the folks here and the folks watching, I would encourage you to make note of this. There'll probably be some ceremonial activities in the different places. I'm not aware of one specific at our GPAC yet, but I encourage you to, to look those up and participate as you can and will, and it's very important, and I appreciate you sharing that with us. Thank you. Okay, I believe those are all the presentations that I have before me. So the next item of business is the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda. Council, unless you care to pull an item, I would entertain a motion that we approve it.
A move?
Second.
Okay, motion properly made by Mr. Singleton and seconded by Mr. Vance. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If there's opposition, no, and there is none. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to actually do an old business. I believe there are no public hearings this evening noted on my agenda. So the first item will be a Tier Two Conditional Plan District Rezoning, CZPD 2201, Golden Trace, and I'll recognize Ms. Hares. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Just give me a minute to get it pulled up here. Good evening, councilmembers. This is Golden Trace Conditional Zoning, CZPD 2201. This is a planned residential district rezoning, a Tier Two zoning with a master plan as well as the PRD booklet, but it will be adopted as a R4 conditional district under the new UDO. So general case information, the applicant is Tucker Enos of the Lennar Corporation. The owners are Richard and Sharon Slater, as well as various members of the Bryan family. It is approximately 45 acres, and as I mentioned, it is a planned residential development, which will be adopted as a version of R4, so it does fall within that density requirement of the R4 district. So the location of the site is off of New Bethel Church Road. It is directly adjacent to the Oak Manor subdivision and the Harper's Landing subdivision, which have come before you previously. It is south of Clifford Road, and then there is also the South Garner High School and various other residential subdivisions in the area, including the Oak Park subdivision to the south. The existing zoning is residential two, R2, which allows for single-family residential at a maximum rate of two dwelling units per acre, so typically low-density single-family homes. They are proposing a number of conditions, so it would be a conditional district, PRD C-13, which would be adopted as a R4 conditional district. They are limiting their permitted uses to only single-family residential, and the maximum density shall not exceed 2.73 dwelling units with a maximum of 130 dwelling units for the site. They will establish a HOA to maintain the, the facilities on the site, and HOA documents will be recorded with the first final plot. With the PRD district, they are required to state if there is a deviation from the R12 base district of the old UDO, and so they are requesting a deviation. The lot sizes will be a minimum of 4,680 square feet. And here are some more dimensionals, kind of going through what those differences would be from the R12 base district. So the garage setback of 22 feet, front yard setbacks of 30 feet and 20 feet, rear yard setback of 20 feet and 15 feet, and then the side yard would be a five-foot minimum with 10 foot combined, and the corner side lot would be a 10-foot. They are proposing a main amenity, which will be constructed upon the first certificate of occupancy in Phase One, and there will be a pool as well as cabana and some other amenities there. All dwelling units will have at least a two-car garage. If masonry is not the predominant first-floor finish, meaning greater than 50%, then the elevations will have two types of siding, minimum, and all foundations will be turned-down slab with finished floor elevation of at least 12 inches above grade. All turned-down slab foundations will have some type of masonry, and masonry will hang from the foundation wall with wire mesh and will not rust on the insulation. Any front garage doors will have windows. All homes will have a minimum of 12-inch reeves on the front and rear with 12-inch roof overhangs on the side. An outdoor deck, porch, or patio, a minimum of 100 square feet is required for all dwelling units. A covered front porch, minimum of 20 square feet, is required, and any cantilever projection will have cosmetic brackets or shelf supports. All dwelling units will have at least one window per habitable floor on each side elevation, and will have window trim. And the main amenity will have a swimming pool, cabana, benches, trash receptacles, and bike racks. They will also provide decorative fixtures along the garage door facades. Final siding is prohibited, and they are proposing black aluminum picket fencing around all wet pond SCMs. One condition that is before you that wasn't in the last meeting is that they are part of the White Oak Bryan corridor impact area, and so the applicant's attorney, as well as our town attorney, have looked through this language to come up with a agreeable condition here, which is listed as Condition 19. So this area is within the Lower Swift Creek Overlay District, which has additional development standards for residential developments, which is mostly to limit the maximum impervious to 30% of total surface area. The overhaul neighborhood character, we went through a little bit in the vicinity map, but it is largely residential, consisting primarily of single-family detached residents with a few townhouses mixed in. There are some agricultural tracts that still remain, and the area is influenced heavily by the presence of South Garner High School. Traffic data on New Bethel Church Road was collected up until the year 2015, so we do not have more information in the recent years. However, a TIA was completed with this study, and as I mentioned, they are part of the Walters Buffalo Development Agreement, which passed in November of last year, and so they will contribute to that, those road improvements outlined in that development agreement. They held a neighborhood meeting on May 18 of 2022 at the Avery Street Recreation Center, and there were five people in attendance. There were no questions, but there was a discussion about the history of the place. So this is the master plan that they are proposing. So you can see the total acreage of about 47 acres here, including this electrical utility easement that runs on the eastern side of the site. The proposed density is 130 units with a maximum density of 2.73 dwelling units an acre. They are proposing two products of single-family detached housing, so one being the 31-foot-wide garage lot, which is 95 units, which is the orange product A, and then the 29-foot-wide rear-loaded alley garage lot, which is the product in yellow. As you can see, there is a stream buffer that runs along the entire perimeter of the northern and western edge of the property, as well as some fingers that come into the more central areas. There is a continuous private trail system as well as contributing to the public greenway. And I would like to mention that while this public greenway is on the most recent version of the parks plan, it was on a previous version, and in discussions with the developer, Parks and Recreation staff and planning staff has asked for that connection in order to create a pedestrian connection to the Harper's Landing and to Oak Manor, which both have some open space, kind of adjacent to this boundary. So that was an addition that the developer was willing to work with us and added that in. You can also see that there are two main entrances proposed off of New Bethel Church Road with the main amenity to the sort of southwest corner of the site. These are some of the proposed elevations, so you can see some of the zoning conditions, including masonry, the windows on the garages, and other details, and the houses on the top row here are the front-loaded, and then the houses on the bottom row are the rear-loaded, alley-loaded product with the garage in the back. So the consistency of the request, it is consistent with the transportation plan. As I mentioned, they are including the public greenway along the electrical easement on the east side, providing connections to the adjacent Oak Manor and Harper's Landing. They are also going to add the sidewalks along New Bethel Church Road as a pedestrian recommendation. They will install curb, gutter, and sidewalks. Any road riding that is required will be done, and the project will be considered consistent with the transportation plan. The site is not designated as a parkland search area, and there is no proposed greenway on the recent plan. However, they are adding the additional greenway, and the plan is consistent with the parks' master plan. And the consistency statement, this project went to Planning Commission last month, and on a vote of six to one, they voted to recommend it to you as consistent with the town's adopted land use plans. So your charge here tonight is the reasonable action, reasonableness action, and your motion worksheet should be before you. Staff supports the request but encourages the commission to identify specific reasons for agreeing or disagreeing with staff recommendation consensus. The motion will be documented in the final staff report. So again, here is the master plan ahead of you, and I do believe the applicant has prepared a few slides.
Okay, I thank you so much, Ms. Hares, for your good presentation. Before you leave, I'll see if council has any questions they'd like to ask of you. I'll start at my right with Mr. Vance, if he has anything.
No questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
I have a couple of questions. On page 43, where it has the elevations and lot setbacks, it says rear, it says corner side setbacks eight feet, but in the condition chart, it says 10. So which?
I do not have the PRD book in front of me, but I think the applicant could respond to that when they present.
Asking for deviation, the standard is 20, and so asking for deviation, so I'll wait for that. Other question is, the Condition Five deviation chart only lists deviations for single-family front load proposed. Are we to assume, or is it going to be added, that the rear load have the exact same setback deviations or not? They are different widths, so I don't know that, I mean that...
I'm sorry, I don't have the book in front of me. I'm not sure.
Condition Five?
Can you repeat the question?
Condition Five has the deviation chart for the requested deviations. The second column is single-family front load. This has front and rear load, and so I'm wondering if it's supposed to be both, but the two lot sizes are different, so I don't know if they would be requesting different deviations for different lot sizes.
I think I'm not as familiar with the old UDO, so please forgive me as I'm still learning, but I think that the R12 district might not have had specific standards for rear loaded.
They're listed on the left side of the column, so it has to, those carry over to the PRD, and if they request greater than 20%, then they have to get the approval from council. So that's why, as I said, there are two product types, but they only have one deviation chart, so I'm...
I think staff is going to look into it more and let you know if they have an answer.
Ms. Behringer, anything? Ms. Singleton?
Ms. Hares, just to confirm, what's shown here on the master plan is that they are responsible for the public greenway, and their private trail system will connect to that, which is set on the eastern side, correct? Okay. Okay.
So the green is the public and the purple is the private in what you're looking at?
Okay, that's all for now. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Just make sure, and they will be participating in on the road improvements on the White Oak Road. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I see the applicant coming up, and I'll go back around one more time. Anything, Ms. Berry? Anything, Mr. Vance? Okay, Mr. Dellinger, do you have another question? All right. Okay. Any questions to my left here, Ms. Harris? Okay, if you will, come forward and introduce yourself, give us your address.
Good evening, Mayor Marshburn, members of council. I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poet 301 Fayetteville Street here on behalf of the applicant. Ms. Harris did a very thorough presentation, so I'll just hit a few high notes and then try to address some of those questions, which I heard most of them, but if I missed one, please do ask it again. So this is the Golden Trace rezoning. Again, our site and surrounding area for context, Ms. Harris covered that pretty thoroughly. But about a 45-acre parcel. Is there something you wanted to offer? Okay. And zoned R2 today. Wrong button. Future land use map, always what we look to for guidance. Here it calls for medium-density residential, calls for density between 2.5 and 5 units per acre, and encourages or offers a mixture of uses. We're actually coming on the low end here with what we're asking for, which is purely single-family detached residential and at 2.7 units per acre, so on the low end of the 2.5 to 5 units per acre. And this is the concept plan, the master plan that we went through. I think the defining feature that helps to address some of the questions we just heard is this is a conservation-style development. And so what that does is it encourages the preservation of open space. You bring your residential lots closer together, and it allows you to preserve more. And so what that does on this site, a 45-acre site, we're able to preserve 25%, 12 acres. And what it also does, and I think the thing that we want to highlight here is, we've got two product types, the front-loaded, which is the beige color, and the rear-loaded, which is the yellow color. But if you look at those front-loaded and the beige, every single one of them is backing up to some form of open space. So a lot have forested area, a lot are on that wide-open easement area. And even at the front, we've pulled them off of the street so that there's separation and open space. And that is the intent of this development option. It allows you to bring everybody closer together and maximize the environmental preservation of the site. And here, what you can see pretty clearly is you can see a stream feature on the, kind of, I guess, call it the northwest corner, and all of the forested area around it. And so that's allowed to be preserved with this, and it creates a nice feature, a nice natural buffer, that everybody backs up to. And so that's what you're able to achieve. It encourages environmental preservation. Lots are a little more dense, but you're limiting the impact on the environment. So that's what we're able to achieve here. Now, council member Dellinger's questions about the lot sizes and the deviations, I do recall that coming up at the last hearing. And we were frankly a little confused because we hadn't looked at it in a long time. It wasn't a topic that came up earlier in discussions. But the way the code operates is that if you have any PD, you have to look to the R-12 district, which is not really what we're seeking here, and then define your dimensions from that. And so although it's phrased as we're asking for deviations, that's because there's just one set of standards that applies to all of these, no matter what your type is. So we set our own lot dimensions to fit with the product types that we're offering. They're phrased as deviations from the front-loaded, because at least our recollection, the way the code was phrased, that we're deviating and applied standards to the front-loaded homes. There weren't separate standards for rear-loaded units. So instead of calling for deviations, we then had our standards set out. So what you see in the dimensional standards is what we're providing. Now, if to the extent it's different, or the prior version was interpreted as applying to both, then yes, we would be seeking those deviations. But it wasn't separately listed because, I guess, the interpretation of the code that we had was that there wasn't a separate standard from which to deviate from, we were defining this. The 8-foot, 10-foot, the question you had where it's 8 and 1, 10 is correct, and that is the condition that we'd be held to. So I think there's a rule that'll be in the beginning of any code or a rule of interpretation, which if there are two conflicting standards, the more stringent applies. So that addresses the 10-foot standard. Also, in response to your questions at the last hearing about those dimensional standards, we went back and looked, because again, it wasn't really a major area of focus, those dimensions and the deviations, we were seeking it. But that's really the lowest common denominator. And what we found is that when you lay out the site, and we hadn't got to the full engineering, that we are larger in several aspects when it's actually laid out. But we had to condition to the lowest common denominator on these site plans. So two types of trails connect all the open space throughout the community. We do have public and private greenways. So the private is shown in purple, and that kind of mainly is internal to our site, connecting the amenity areas, pool and clubhouse on the kind of left-hand side, and then purple trail bringing that to the little park a little further north. Then a purple trail, again, private, leaving our neighborhood to connect to the public greenway. Again, that's not on the town's plans, but staff encouraged us, and we were willing to add it. That would be a great addition to that area to the right. A number of zoning conditions, we've worked extensively with staff on these, and Ms. Harris covered them in great detail. But again, we added all of the architectural conditions that staff thought were appropriate here, have requirements to have the HOA to have the amenity built at a certain point in time. Then I think, importantly, to the town's overall goals is the contribution of our share to those White Oak and Bryan Road corridor improvements. And so I worked with Ms. Jones on that condition, and it says that we have to pay our fair share. It's exactly what we're offering to do here, and we're committing to that. So with that, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval. I did want to, just the one no vote caught us again by surprise because it wasn't the topic of discussion, but the comment was, we've got front-loaded and rear-loaded units facing each other, and the Planning Commission member didn't think that was appropriate. Had we addressed that at the hearing, what we would have said is, they have the same streetscape, same streetscape requirements, and so they are harmonious with one another. But also, again, this layout allows us for all of those front-loaded units, every single one, it allows us to have open space behind them. And I think that's, this is a good example of why you want to encourage that conservation-style development and the cluster-style development, because although our lots are smaller on paper, you could look at every single lot and find all the extra space that it's able to access and kind of provide enjoyment to the neighborhood. So with that, we respectfully request that you vote to approve this rezoning. Of course, we've got our full team here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marsh. Mr. Matthews, anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Mr. Marsh, you talked about the additional buffer on the front of the product facing, where it's not going to be facing, it's going to be facing Street B. So how wide is that? I have a detailed site plan. How wide is that light green buffer there? Because you said the houses will be backing up to the natural area. I was just curious how wide that is.
I'm getting a 20 feet, but we also have engineers that are confirming.
Okay.
Nick Williams, Mr. Adams, can you confirm the area you're talking about? Is the area along New Bethel Church?
Right, New Bethel Church Road where it shows on here, and you've got product A. Mr. Marsh, there's a natural buffer left there where every front-loaded house would be backing up to natural vegetation. I was wondering how wide that is.
Yes, that'll be after the right-of-way dedication, it'll be about 20 or 30 feet.
So that's going to be after the dedication, I reckon it's undisturbed. I'm trying to think, some of that's wood and some of it's not.
So yeah, if the statement was undisturbed buffer, I guess it's, everything backs up to open space or undisturbed buffer. So some of it, like the easement area, is already cleared on the streetscape to do the right-of-way and all of that, that would be disturbed. So to clarify, the undisturbed areas would be the areas highlighted in green, the darker green color. And I think our tree canopy preservation here is eight acres of the existing canopy is preserved, and that's the area shown in green. So I apologize if I misstated that earlier.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Berry, anything? Mr. Dellinger, anything?
Yeah, on the deviations for the PRD, you're entitled to 20% automatic deviation from the underlying district. Anything over, you have to get permission for. So you said it, but there's sort of an understanding that that's the base, and you're entitled to a little bit of leeway. I think on the side yard, that we've, we have forced higher than the five-feet minimum setback on the sides because it's safer to have a wider setback. I have a lot of problems with those five feet. I have looked at Oak Park, which is right next to it, they've got wider lots. And from an aerial view, they look really close together, but they're 15 feet apart. And so I don't think that's enough setback. I think the default of the six-foot and 15 combined, I understand you will lose some units on your plan, but it seems to be designed to lose a few units on the ends. So I'm really concerned for safety reasons, for firefighter safety reasons going in between houses. Again, we've historically made the applicant go back to the default for safety reasons. So I do have concerns on that. The other question I have is on the lot minimums. And there are two product types, a 31-foot minimum and 29-foot minimum, correct?
I believe that's correct.
And I guess I'm confused as to why they're so small when you've got, the elevations that are provided have two-car garages in the front. So two-car garage is 20 feet wide, and then it's got a porch area to the side, which is another 10 feet. That's 30 feet. So help me understand how these elevations fit on 29 and 31-foot lots?
So I mean, there are a range of elevations, but again, we have to condition to the lowest common denominator. So there are a lot of instances where lots are larger than that minimum size. But because we have one lot that's at that minimum size, we have to ask for approval to have a lot at that minimum size. But there's a wide range offered within it. We did look at things like side setbacks and increasing them, and it is a substantial loss of the site. But I think to get to the why, why the smaller lots, that all goes back to the conservation development and the intent, which is maximize preserving the open space and condense lots to do it.
But if you went from the five to the six, you'd lose one house per 10 units, right? And you would go from 140 to around 280 or 130, I'm not sure which, because it's 95 and 45. I think that still, it still makes a viable, financially viable development, yes?
I think we've looked into the numbers, and it's quite a significant impact. I think if you think about road improvements, public commitments, all the street infrastructure, rising costs, I'm sure you all have heard it, but the market that we're in today versus the market that this case was filed are night and day different. So we did have those discussions, and we looked at it hard, but the impact is major. So it's not just a, hey, we can drop these lots and it's going to be fine. It's a different project at that point, and then you have to start looking at all the other commitments, and what can't we do anymore?
I'll let Mr. Vance speak. I do have concern about the small setbacks, and I did sort of an analysis of reducing the number, and yes, it impacts, but it's still viable, so thank you.
Mr. Vance, anything?
I have no questions. No.
Okay, I'll circle back one time over here. Anything? Mr. Singleton, you're satisfied?
I'm satisfied, but I'll pass right now.
Okay. Ms. Berry, okay. Mr. Dellinger, go back to you one more time?
Yeah, I'm just, I still think that the buffers are a safety concern, and it's not unreasonable to make sure that with Walters Buffalo came in as a multifamily project. They were able to do seven and a half. The Bennett property we just did was seven and a half as well. Those benefited by being single-family and townhomes, so. But there's just no rational safety reason to have the single-family detached units that close together. It just gives me concerns for safety.
Okay. Was there anybody else that expected to give any testimony? Only if we had questions, is that right?
Yeah, with questions.
Okay. Counsel, you've heard Mr. Marsh. Do you care to hear from any of the other experts he has here with him this evening? Okay, hearing none. I believe that's all for now, Mr. Marsh. Thank you very much. Okay, this is not a regular public hearing. We had the public hearing back on December 20th, so the manner is properly before us. But if there is a person who showed up tonight desiring to speak on this issue, I'll give that option to anybody. Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Counsel, this manner is properly before you for a motion, as is noted in your agenda packet. Are you ready for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Town Council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 6 of the staff report as their own. I further the move that the Town Council adopt ordinance number 2023-5182 approving rezoning CZ-PD-22-01 as the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely be of overall design, it keeps within the town's character, improves property values, invest significantly in outdoor spaces, promote natural features such as major trees, streams, hills, and woodlands.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Motion properly made. Counsel, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Vance, thank you. Motion's segmented. Okay, before we vote, I'll give counsel an opportunity, if you care, to make further comment in regards to the manner before you. I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
I think Mr. Dellinger has raised a good point. I mean, 10 feet is a medium, Ms. Berry. So you're going to have houses that close. Just remember that.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, was anything? Ms. Berry, Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend that for Condition 5, the side yard be maintained for the R-12 at the six-foot minimum, 15 combined, and strike the five-foot minimum, 10-foot combined.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger has asked, has moved for amendment to the regular motion. You've heard his request. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion to amend has a second properly made by Mr. Singleton.
If I may advise counsel, we need to know whether the applicant consents to that concession. Since this is a conditional rezoning, you cannot impose a condition at this time.
Okay.
So we're just discussing with our team. We've looked at this issue in the past. And what we determined when we looked at the six-foot setback is that we could do 50% of all lots at a six-foot setback. But when we go on that threshold, it does change the project. So we would be willing to offer as a voluntary condition that 50% of all lots within the community, so not distinguishing between types, just 50%, have a minimum six-foot side setback. And we'd be able to accommodate that in the plans.
Be able to limit the five-foot setbacks to just the back-loaded? Since it's a sort of different product type?
I don't believe so. I believe that that has a major hit on the project.
I'm going to ask if you think there's going to be a need... I'm going to ask if you think there's going to be a need for more time to discuss this matter. We've got, we could move to another manner that I don't think will take very long, but I don't want to take so much time here.
Mr. Mayor, could I just point for clarification? Is the 50% agreeable to my two colleagues on that?
Yeah, what, what, yeah, what he's mentioned.
I think if it were limited to one product type, it makes a little more sense, but 50% is kind of arbitrary. And in looking at the site plan, doing the six to 15 would eliminate a few units, but not, I mean, I think I had counted nine to 10 units would be eliminated.
Was that a yes or a no, Mr. Tellinger?
No, the flat 50.
All right, we have one person who doesn't agree with that. Do you need further discussion or some time to get back to us?
I'd like to get some guidance if the changes, I mean, I think ultimately what, what we're putting together is something that would be included in no matter what. It's what I was trying to get to, that we condition to the lowest common denominator. So I guess what I'm telling the council is, we've done the study and we've been able to find ways to, where with this unit count, you end up with those six-foot side setbacks on 50% of the units. Now, quantifying that may be hard, but if, but that is the study that's been done. So if that is enough, we, we, I don't know that the condition changes it.
Do we need to vote on that amendment, first of all?
Well, I think I heard the town attorney say that the matter could be amended. Did I hear that correctly at this hearing?
The applicant would have to consent in writing to that amendment, and it doesn't sound like that, their counterproposal is acceptable.
Right.
So this, it would not be able to be enforced.
So the, the request for amendment is out of order or is not accepted here? So I think we're back to the original motion.
In that case, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and call for a question then.
Okay. So we are back to the original motion of, made by Mr. Matthews and seconded by, I forget who.
I think there's a bit of unreadiness.
I'm sorry? Please, please come there and speak.
Just wanted to clarify what it was that y'all would be saying. If there was willingness, if they were offering the 50% at six feet, I mean, we're still, staff would be okay with it on an enforcement level. But if, if y'all were, if they were willing to offer that and y'all were willing to accept that, then they can amend the motion. So just didn't, just wanted to, we just weren't sure back there. So I'll let y'all decide.
Okay, so you've heard from planning staff. If counsel is willing to accept the, the information shared by Mr. Marsh, then we can go ahead and vote on the matter. What say you, counsel?
My position sort of is, is still that the five feet is, is fundamentally less safe than the six feet. And that the six feet is, can be a common denominator in other projects that are actual multifamily, have even gone wider than the six feet. We, there was another project that was Charleston-style homes. They came in with five feet. We made them do the six and the 15 combined. It's, it's a safety issue with the houses that close together. It is just fundamentally safer that they be a little bit further apart. And if, I would like to think the developer would think so as well.
Well, Mr. Tellinger, I appreciate your, your point. And, but you've heard the discussion that has ensued and the developer at this time does not agree to those changes. So I believe we're back to the point of voting on the original motion. Would that be correct, Ms. Attorney?
Unless a member wanted to make an amendment consistent with what was offered by the developer.
We can have him repeat that if you want to. I'm not sure I can repeat it.
So we would be able to commit to that 50% of units within the development have a six-foot side setback?
Mr. Mayor, I'll amend my motion to add that condition, 50% to my original motion. Would that be acceptable, Ms. Attorney?
All right. Counsel, is there a second to the motion now amended? Okay, properly made by Mr. Vance. Okay. I believe we are now ready to vote on the motion with the amendment included. I give a last-minute opportunity for comment if you want to make it before the vote. I suppose so. Will you vote on the amendment first?
Yes, technically you'd be voting on, well, because Mr. Matthews made it, it's almost like a substitute motion.
Yeah.
Instead, but to, to be clear, you are voting on the approval with the amendment. If you don't like the amendment, you would vote no.
Right. So we don't have to vote on the amendment separately, I don't think, since, since he--
Because Mr. Matthews adjusted his motion. It's technically more like a substitute motion instead of an amended motion.
Okay. That is my understanding. Okay. So the, the motion is before you with the stipulation made by Mr. Matthews. I'm going to call for a vote now. If you favor the motion that is before you, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you oppose the motion, vote no.
No.
Okay, chair clears that the motion passes on a vote of four to one, and the matter is approved. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we'll now move to item number two under new and old business, the renaming of downtown social district. And is Ms. Douglas here?
Yeah, I'm online.
Oh, excuse me, okay. Okay, I recognize you at this time, Ms. Douglas.
This is just an amendment to the previous ordinance y'all received in December. I believe the DJ board has went in the direction of branding it as the Garner Social District over the downtown district. So we would have to submit the change of ordinance to the ALE board before the district becomes operational.
Okay, so counsel, you've heard of the explanations from Ms. Douglas. Any questions for her about this matter? Mr. Vance, anything?
A question on here, Ms. Tellinger. Behringer, any down here? Okay. So--
We adopt ordinance 2023-5181.
Second. Motion made and probably seconded by Mr. Matthews. Call for the question at this time, or I'll ask for you to vote on the motion. And so if you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, no. And it is so ordered.
Mr. Mayor, well, I've got on the line, out of curiosity, the way Garner's growing and we have like shopping centers and what have you out of the historic district where it has restaurants and different types of retail in there. Is that something down the road, Ms. Douglas, that we're going, that we look at as more than one social district? Or how, how does that work with, with what we're doing here, just out of curiosity?
So you are allowed to establish more than one social district, and it can be in different parts within the municipality. If we wanted to, we can change the name of the district we have now. If we add an additional one, we would just have to submit paperwork and the new boundaries and the name and photographs of the sign to ALE so they have it on file. So if we want to add another, if we want to change the existing one, we can always go back and follow ALE and everything will be changed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, all right. All right, we're ready to move to our next item, I believe, which is committee reports. Have any committees met that need to make a report to the full council? Okay, not tonight. All right, none. All right, thank you. All right, I recognize our town manager this time for his report.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, you have in your packet, your agenda packet, manager reports. One being the Go Triangles, having an open house style community meeting on the commuter rail, and that's February 16th from 5:30 to 8:00 at the Garner Senior Center. Residents can drop in and offer their feedback. The next item is Public Works is holding an electronics recycling event on Saturday, February 18th from 8:00 to 1:00 at the Public Works complex at 610 Rand Mill Road. And you can find more information on the Garner website, garnernc.gov. And that's something they do, I think, at least once a year, maybe twice, but I think just once a year to get some of the electronics out of the waste stream and keep, prevent that from going to the landfill or being illegally dumped. The third item, character and land use elements are CLUE. There's a community workshop on Wednesday, February 22nd, from noon to 6:00 PM at the Garner Recreation Center. And residents can drop in anytime during that time period and offer input on the proposed updates to the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. And they can learn about CLUE by going to the garnerforward.com website. And one additional item I wanted to talk to you about, and I may have Mr. Hodges add, add into this, but we, if you remember correctly, when Fire Station 5 was designed and we were going through the approvals for that on Catty Road, there was an addition at the back of the building that was cost prohibitive at the time to include in the original bid, bid, the final bid with the bidding contractor. We've, well, Wake County's since gone back and spoken to the winning contractor and has gotten a proposal to complete that, what we call basically a shell, just to basically the exterior walls and the roof to add that additional square footage. And came back at a price of $210,000, which is less than it was at the time. And so it is staff's recommendation that we give Wake County approval to have the contractor add that addition as they're building the fire station. And there's no plans for using the space right now, but it would be economical to build that as they're building the rest of the building, to add that additional space at that cost. So we would need your approval to do that. Anything to add on that, John? You remember what the square footage was of that? I don't remember exactly what the square footage was.
Don't have the square footage. It would be roughly equivalent to the sleeping quarters. It was originally the sleeping quarters if Fuquay Fire Department was going to be added into our station. So I don't have the dimensions with me, Mr. Manager.
So the $210,000, is that our part or is that the total cost?
Total, because this is totally ours, because there's no cost shared of this, because it was a request by us to add it on and keep it in the program when Fuquay pulled out the program. It would include basic drywall, no HVAC, basic plumbing, basic electrical, no ceiling. It would just be the metal supports above, concrete slab-on-grade, painting the drywall. The sprinklers would be there from a life safety standpoint, and two metal exterior doors. So it's a, I think, a cold-lit shell would be how the, the contracting world would refer to it, because there's minimal lighting, but there's not HVAC in the space.
But you did say with the cement slab as opposed to gravel floor, which we've seen other places.
Correct. And we do know by doing the, the floor, we may have to, to cut into that once we program it in the future to retrofit for plumbing. But it is best practice to go ahead and do the slab now instead of leaving it gravel like we've seen in some other buildings that we've been a party to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think it's a great idea. I concur with all my colleagues. And plus, you know, we had talked about this, with all the growth going out there, especially commercial as well as residential, we're going to need a stronger police presence out there. I think probably more on a regular basis than just two people roaming around in that area. And this would be an opportunity later on if we need to have a space for them, other than what that little space we originally was going to give them, that would give them more space out there. There it would be for us to, to finish out when that time came. So I'd support it.
Of course, we don't know the, the potential cost to, to flesh this thing out and to build it out at this point in time.
I'm just supporting. I said, that's something we could use it for later on.
We haven't programmed the space. We have had discussions about police and police use of the space. And for them, it wouldn't be ideal because there's not a, a separate entrance. But that's not to say they couldn't use it for something. But, you know, that's to be determined. But I think the prudent thing now is to add the space, and then we'll figure out the most beneficial way to use it in the future.
Okay.
From a cost standpoint, can we safely assume that it's, it'd be more economical to go ahead and do the construction now than to wait later with a different, possibly different contractor coming in, trying to figure out and retrofit everything into another design?
Correct. Because we've had experience with retrofitting existing building and cutting into the roof. The more you cut into the roof and exterior walls, you create other issues. So we think it's beneficial to let it be constructed all at the same time.
It's safe to say we learned a hard lesson with the modification of the former medical building with the police station. I'm assuming that's the roof we're talking about. We're not talking about the wrecked on the roof. That's a whole nother story.
Correct.
Okay.
One additional bit of information I would add is, you know, that is going to add to the overall cost of the building. And we already know that there's some cost overruns for that facility due to the market that we're in and things coming in higher. And staff has brought information to you before that to cover the cost overruns. Until another source is identified, the ARP is probably the most beneficial way to cover those costs. So I know that we've had some discussion about that, but there's never really been a vote. But, I mean, we do need to kind of make sure you're okay with us going that route. And I think the cost overruns right now is like 1.5 or so, and this is going to add to it. And we do have those funds, you know, available, so.
Can I assume we're going to be talking more about those funds at our council retreat and the use of?
Yes, we'll get an update on some of the, I believe that we're going to give an update on some of those funds and some projects where they are.
Okay. Since we are doing this in regards to managers' reports, I'm inclined to maybe ask counsel for a thumbs up if you agree with the, the extra cost to, to build this shell.
Mr. Mayor, I am in favor. But I think we, if we're going to use the ARP funds, we did create a rubric for that. So at least, even if we make an exception, we need to put it through the rubric process.
Yes, we talked about--
Okay, all right.
We talked about doing that, yeah.
Okay. So with that comment made, counsel, are you in favor of moving with this? Give me a thumbs up if you are. Okay, everybody, it's unanimous.
Just have one question. A reference, you said 1.5, what?
Million.
Million, okay.
Yes.
And that's before the addition of this 210,000. That was just the, the overage once the bid was opened.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
That's it for manager reports, unless anybody has anything else.
Okay. Any other questions for the manager? Okay, I'm going to recognize Ms. Jones, our attorney for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As most of you, or I believe all of you know, Councilmember Dellinger has inquired as to whether the project on Garner Road, I think it's called Buffalo Town Homes, with respect to the approval and the connection to Curtis Drive. Since I've had a discussion with him and been able to meet with staff and the managers, the completion of street stubs policy is not actually listed in the UDO as the approval process. So based on how the condition was written, the applicant would need to make a written request for an exemption under that policy if they would not want that connection to occur. The open question for counsel this evening is what kind of process you would like, since it doesn't fall under the review table that talks about what kind of notice and hearing requirements are required. So you, you basically have two options. We could receive the written request, the planning department could evaluate it, and it could be placed on a subsequent agenda, or it could run through the same approval process as the original plan, which would be a public hearing, referral to Planning Commission, and then back to council for a decision. Since this is not spelled out in the UDO, it's your discretion as to how you would like to proceed with receiving these exemption requests. to proceed with receiving these exemption requests. And this would be the first type of exemption request that didn't come in while the policy's been in effect, because the project was approved before the policy was adopted. So we probably won't have too many of these types of requests that won't occur with the normal review and approval process.
Okay, go ahead.
I think this is good. So, or I guess my question is, when it's brought in, are we alerting these developers now that this is an option you have on the table? If you don't want to do that cut through, you can request an exemption. Are we telling them that now so they got a chance to deal with it prior to it? Come to us and we shoot it back, and it's got to go through that process, then come back to us again, I guess.
Right. They have asked what the process would be before they decide whether or not to submit that exemption.
I think Mr. Matthews' question was other developers.
How would that impact, like we've just, a couple of weeks ago off Old Stage Road, we had a concern there, a stub out. Also, we had one over in Greenbrier. Those that we've had issues with, I call it the stub issues, how does it impact those people? Can they come back now at this point if they know this is an opportunity where they told it, told them at that time, or how did that work out?
I would say the difference with those is that you had those discussions at the time of approval and made a decision at that time, whereas with this particular project, there was not a policy to be applied to talk about whether redundancy or cut through traffic or environmental factors were present. So those other projects, I suppose they could make a request at any time, but I don't know that there's any new information necessarily with respect. Now, I can share from the planning department, the latest one that you had with Hurst Drive, there may be an environmental constraint to that, and they are going to be going to the State Department of Environmental Quality to see whether they'll be, would be able to make additional stream crossings. So that's one where it's been referred to Planning Commission, but they're going to hold off till they have an answer from the state.
But anybody else at this time, because, you know, stubs have been an issue. And I guess my, from what I'm hearing here is that, say, the Greenbrier project, for example, that was a big point of contention there. Did, I guess, did the developer know they could request an exemption? Because if, my question is, if they knew that, I would thought they would have requested, and that issue would have gone away.
But we approved that with the blessing of the neighborhood at the one-way street. So to me, that's not a, I mean, that, we're fine with that.
Right. In those cases, the developer was in those discussions and, you know, presented conditions or asked about gating of the street during construction, you know, to accommodate certain concerns. But at this point, once a master plan conditional request is approved, it then becomes a vested right. So only the developer applicant would be able to come back and ask for that. The residents would not have standing to do that outside of the appeals period, and they've all, their appeals period has run. But I, you know, there's nothing in the policy that says when you have to make these requests. So in theory, developers could make subsequent requests. For instance, if they find out that they can't get an Army Corps or some kind of permit that they would need, at that point, it would either be some type of administrative modification or a major modification. Now, under the UDO, a major modification includes whenever you're reducing an access point. It also includes things like if you're changing the density by more than, I think it's 20%. There are certain categories in the UDO that say what's a major modification. Typically, a major modification would go through the same approval process that it went through the first time. So if it required a special use permit, or if it required a public hearing and referral to Planning Commission, it will go through that process.
Okay.
Just trying to get a handle on it. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jones, would you want to defer to Mr. Trezenberg for a moment? I think he wanted to comment on this.
If I may, I will just, there, those other two cases, there were other non-conformity UDO issues that were requiring that to be connected. This one that they would be coming back to, there's no non-conformities about it. So that, and that makes that, brings the policy into play where you all have that discretionary number four. So even if Greenbrier were to look at their case, theirs was still required to meet other UDO requirements. So we never got to the policy. So that's important distinction there.
Okay, did I, so it would be proper for this council to vote to decide which way they want to bring this back?
Right. We'd be asking for it, council to provide some direction as to whether they want public notice, public hearing prior to hearing or making a decision on an exemption request.
All right.
And, my clarification, and the exemption would be for the connection and not for the site plan?
Right. The site plan is showing it as a connection. And the UDO technically requires it as a connection right now unless an exemption is granted.
And for my clarification here, for the, when it was initially shown to us, it was not a connection. It was invisible lines there for possible connection for Curtis Drive. Point being is that it wasn't shown as an actual connection as some of other parts of the site plan was shown as an actual connection to, but it wasn't an actual connection on the site plan itself when it came before us.
I think there were various iterations of it, but the last version that you saw had it as a, like a hatched in, that it could be a connection or it could be removed if, depending on the policy.
If it came back to us, that there would no longer be hashed in, but actual connection. If the site plan came back to us, it'd be actual connection and not hashed in.
If we saw it today.
If we saw it today.
Right. I believe the site plan that's been approved and signed off on has the connection.
Has a.
Okay, clarify. It still has a dashed, and it has a note that says if required by town policy. But the town policy doesn't require connections. The UDO requires connections. The town policy provides exemptions. So at the time, it was an awkwardly written note or condition on that plan.
Okay.
But to clarify, the request would be to exempt the connection so that the connection would not have to be made.
I guess it goes to my question, is when it came to us on April 19th, it clearly said that that connection was not required.
No, it said if required by town policy.
There's a slide, points an arrow to the connection and says, connection to Vandora West is not required. I mean, it's neither here nor there with what we're going to do tonight, but as far as there being consistency with what we're presented and then ultimately what is required, it explicitly said it wasn't, so.
Right. But the note said the Curtis Drive connection to be provided if required by town council policy.
Correct.
But the policy didn't flesh out connections, the policy fleshed out exemptions.
Correct. So I guess that clause, if we didn't pass any other policies requiring a connection, then it's moot. And so when it came, right, because the policy requiring a question, a connection is different than one allowing an exemption. When it came before us, it said it wasn't required, and that version had been around since the Planning Commission. So I guess, again, we need to figure out at what point the decision was made, it was required. We don't need to do that tonight. But again, with this specific project as it stands now, as you said, we need to decide the process by which this applicant can apply for this exemption. And you've outlined going through the process, again, with a public hearing, Planning Commission, back to council, or just new and old business. And I guess a third option would be a single, a single public hearing as well. Would that also be an option, or?
If you wanted to require a public hearing because that's defined under state law, I would say you have to do the notice, at least the minimum notice requirements under state law. But you, yes, anywhere in between, whatever council wants to direct staff to handle, whether you want them to just post the stub, you know, the stub streets to let the two neighborhoods know, or you want to mail notice. I mean, that would be what kind of public notification and involvement. Obviously, when it comes back to you, it will be on an agenda, so people that receive the agenda would see it.
Okay, I think the manner is right for a motion based on the attorney's instructions, which way council wants to bring it back.
I move that we bring it back, and it can be either on the consent agenda or part of the agenda. I don't see any need in going through the process. Public's been notified. It was approved by the council. Even though I voted against that project, it was approved 4 to 1 with the knowledge of the council that there'd be no connection. So I say let's move forward. We don't need to go through the process. That's, that's what was implied when that project was approved.
All right.
It's a heck of a motion, isn't it?
Mr. Singleton has made a motion. Is there a second? I'm sorry.
I think Ms. Jones is going to let us know that the applicant needs to apply for the exemption. So I think your motion is to just bring it back after the application is made.
Right. My, that they would make a written request saying what their justification or supporting document, you know, whether it's under redundancy or the other category, the other category has some considerations. Then there's the question, the policy still would say connect the sidewalks that are existing. And then there may be an issue with Raleigh, if water or sewer lines are going through there, they may still want the full right-of-way to be dedicated. It would look like a paper street, wouldn't actually, might not actually be constructed. But so, so yes, they should make a written request, something that the planning department can then provide a staff report and evaluation to you, and then you would take a vote.
My motion that be brought to us after the planning staff receives that, if the planning or staff receives an application, be brought forward to us with the information that we need to make a decision.
I second that.
Then it would be on a consent agenda.
No, no, it would be a decision. Not a consent agenda. It would be a discussion item.
All right. So a motion made by Mr. Singleton and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Okay, council, you ready to vote? If you approve the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Should we vote no? Okay, the motion.
Sorry, just to clarify, no additional public notification other than the agenda?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay. So let's see, Ms. Jones, you still have the floor.
Mr. Trezenberg was able to get the written condition for that previous, for Golden Trace. So we do have them agreeing to that condition in writing that meets the requirements of state law.
Okay, very good.
And that will conclude my reports this evening.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Okay, we are at council reports, and I will start with Mr. Matthews to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see some fellow Boy Scouts out in the audience out there. I'm sure they're here for a purpose, and if they wanted to be recognized and for what purpose.
Good evening. If you'll just give us your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Joshua Brantham. I'm the senior patrol leader at Troop 392 at First Presbyterian Church in Garner. We are here today to finish working on our citizenship and the community mayor badge and write about the town hall meeting and what arguments were had.
Hey, don't look at that. Not disagreements for arguments. That's good.
That's pretty much it.
We call it debate.
Well, thank you all.
Without any arguments, would you introduce the other three gentlemen with you there, please?
The one right there beside me, that's my assistant, Andrew Laiswell. The one beside him is Siddharth. That's Joseph right there. And then behind, next to Siddharth is Mr. Raju, our assistant scoutmaster. And then behind them is our other assistant scoutmaster, Mr. David.
Okay, welcome to you all, okay? A little exposure to your local municipal government and having a lively conversation here about a matter or two. We don't sometimes call them arguments, but I guess you could, but call them lively conversation.
It's a debate.
Yeah. Thank you for being here. Yeah, was there anything else you cared to mention?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, we always like to see scouts come in and hear from their town government, and who knows, one of these days you may be sitting where we're sitting. So consider public service as an honorable thing to do.
Are we going to see an Eagle come out of that unit anytime soon, or?
As of right now, I'm the oldest, so is Joseph. We're both around 16 and 16-ish. So we're a really young and small troop, I guess you could say, considering you've got other troops like in Raleigh, they have a lot more scouts, because we lost a lot of ours when COVID hit. And most recently, we've gone through lots of ups and downs in our troop, because we had our trailer stolen a couple weeks, a couple months ago. But we got it back, thank goodness. But yeah, so we're pretty small, but we're trying to grow.
Okay, well, I appreciate your perseverance. Sometimes you start small, or start big and get small, and then maybe you'll grow again. But thank you for your dedication to scouting and for those who work with you. Good to see you, sir, back there. So encourage other scouts to attend our meetings as they can, all right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your.
Y'all picked a good meet to come to, because the last couple, we've been here till 11:00. I'm serious.
If we don't speed along, we might be tonight, no.
That's all I got.
Mr. Singleton, I recognize you.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringer.
Yes, sir, I have a couple of questions, things. At the last, I'm not sure it was last council meeting or the work session, but I mentioned the trash along the exit ramp from Eversboro Road onto Highway 70. It is still there a week later. What do we need to do to get that picked up? It looks awful. It looks like somebody started at Eversboro Road and just deliberately threw trash out all the way down to Highway 50. So we need to do something about that. Also, the off-ramp from Joan Sausage Road, excuse me, I-40 on to Joan Sausage Road South, lots of trash along there. There are trucks that park there, tractor trailers that are not supposed to be parking there. But there's lots and lots and lots of trash on that off-ramp, and these are gateways into Garner. We don't, we need to do something about it instead of staying, well, that's DOT's problem. Yes, maybe it is, but what do we need to do about it? Because we don't deserve that. And the last meeting we had, I reported 1412 Vandora Springs Road that has now spread to 1410 with junk cars and junk in the yards and carports and so forth. And I'd like an update on that, if I could get that.
Ms. Behringer, I can give you an update on that. The staff went out and investigated that, and there's nothing about the situation that rises to our ability to, to take any formal action. So they have sent a letter like we often do, trying to encourage folks to make change there, but there's not a violation.
What about the excess cars?
The things in the yard, I'm not sure about. Usually, whenever staff visits, if there's any cars that are inoperable, inoperable, those are, those are identified. And I did not get any notice that anything was in violation at that address.
Nothing we can do about it looking like a junkyard?
Like we've talked about before there, we often send a letter, and that does get some voluntary compliance, and that's what staff has recently done. So we'll see if we get any results from that.
What happens when the condition of the property is a danger to public health?
If there is a danger to public health as it is defined by the law, then there could be some action that could be taken.
Can you give me an example of what it would be?
No, ma'am. We'll have to get back with you on something specific, but every case could be different.
With the vehicles, if one's inoperable, then there's action we can take against that. I think we have an ordinance where they're allowed to have maybe one that's covered or something like that, probably in the backyard, but.
Which brings me to.
Unfortunately, if, you know, if they're all running, it limits what we can do, even though we don't like the look of them and the quantity.
And then the vehicle at 206 West Garner Road, I couldn't swear to you, it's inoperable, but it's been sitting there for years. And I guess what can we do about that?
Did you get an update on that one, John?
Yes, I'm checking for that update. The vehicle was not operable, and the owner has said that they would be removing the vehicle, and they have given, they sent a letter to give them 10 days to remove it. If they fail to remove it, they'll be tagging it for towing. The, the vehicle was not operable, and the owner has said that they would be removing the vehicle, and they have given, they sent a letter to give them 10 days to remove it, if they fail to remove it, they'll be tagging it for towing.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
Yes, sort of a broad question on the update on the South Garner Greenway extension, had some conversation with residents there, and the idea, and I don't know how feasible this is, was floated that to save money, because it's a three-lane road, there's a, two travel lanes and a center lane, to adapt one of the lanes to be a bike and pedestrian path, and then make it just two lanes. I don't know if that's feasible or not, if that saves money, it's one of the less traveled sort of roads, I think, or connector roads, I don't know how far we are in the process, or, again, I think the other issue that is an issue on that road is, is speeding, and so narrowing the travel lanes may reduce some of the speed, and on top of that, I did have maybe even reducing the speed limit along that road anyway, and making sort of, I put this on the clue thing, because I thought about it this afternoon, from Vandora Springs to Eversboro, making Buffalo sort of a, more of a slower Parkway drive, so I don't know, I put that out there, I don't know how far the design process is, I just know that if it were, and it's a DOT road, of course, so there's that issue, but as far as maintenance of one existing surface versus adding a sidewalk and travel path, and, I don't know, just an idea, so.
Something to look at, we'd have to check in with engineering and DOT, because the third lane, I think, is a turning lane, which may be there for safety, because there are some curves on that stretch, so something to look at.
Yeah, that's why I didn't know whether it fit in the, in the timeline, or whether it fit in something that's been done before, but it was just an idea, so, somebody can look at it and we can talk about it later, that's all I got.
Mr. Beans.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, well, that covers everybody, except the mayor. I know some of you, I don't know if you had a little fun with this or whatever, but at any rate, we had our Groundhog's Day as we usually do, and, you know, the NNO came out and gave us some publicity. I have before me here our famous groundhog, Miss Snurd, and so we're pleased that, we weren't so pleased with the prognostication she made, but she was the hit of the show out there at, at the park, so.
Are you sure it was a girl?
That's what I'm told.
Okay.
So, what these handlers told me.
That's a terrible name for a girl.
Well, I didn't, I don't comment on that, but.
I don't think the mayor had anything to do with that.
Yeah, I did not, for sure, okay. Beyond that, many of you know that for the first time, I believe, maybe in the history of the town, but anyway, our current US Congressman has just recently opened his district office here in Garner, right there on Eversboro Road, had a ceremony out there on Friday, so we hope to maybe invite him in, so he can introduce himself, and he replaces Ms. Ross, who was our representative for a number of years, but I hope you get to know him, and he can help with some in Washington, we think, sure enough, as all those congressmen should. That's all I have, so anything else from anybody? Back there, happy birthday again there, Rick.
Should we sing?
You want to?
Yeah, let's do it, let's do it.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you.
Come on, Jody.
Happy birthday, dear Rick, happy birthday to you.
Only in Garner.
Mr. Mayor, let me say February is a very good month, because Leah's birthday is in February as well.
And the lady sitting next to me also has a birthday in, in February, so, at any rate, I suspect with that, the listening public would prefer that we adjourn at this time, so I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
They probably would have turned us off.
Properly made and seconded, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye, okay, thank you all, thank you very much.